...like fibromyalgia and Alzheimer's and even diabetes. And so I learned this, and through this work, I've been able to very successfully treat a lot of these different conditions out there.
Don't be tired, and it's not drug-based necessarily, right? You're actually like exercises or something, strengthening this instrument.
Yes, it's like exercises for the brain. You know, we actually give exercises for the brain, and we give nutritional support for the organ system, the adrenal glands, and the hormone system, and the lungs, and the heart. We take care of the body nutritionally, metabolically, and neurologically.
Can the results be dramatic? I mean, can there be that kind of a month where suddenly clarity and energy levels return?
Absolutely. We've got many patients with many testimonials that are on my website that they can just say, "I can't believe it, I've had this for 20 years." Now, of course, that's not always the case. There are occasional miracles, and then there are some people that just take maybe six months to a year. But the goal is never to cure something, it's always to enhance the quality of life.
Is there an upper age limit? How old is like the oldest person who has taken to this program?
I think we've seen somebody who is 79.
Wow, so, oh, there's hope for me.
There's hope as long as you feel there's hope.
I see. Let me ask you, given the population that you serve, can you kind of weigh and measure the condition of people who come to you if they have taken better care of themselves in their 40s and 50s before they find themselves at One Generation?
Can we tell the difference between those who have taken good care of themselves?
Yes, exactly.
Absolutely, in a number of ways. One is what I'll just call their mental acuity.
Yes.
One is just the overall condition of just their physical appearance. Another is their ambulatory abilities. You know, you can just look at people and tell the difference between those who have abused those bodies and those who have cared for their bodies.
Well, as a serial abuser, I get this. And in the case of your therapies, is it, would you rather start with a blank slate where people don't have preconceptions about the state of their health? Or do you like them to be informed, or at least get informed?
You know, I think I like them to, first of all, take the label off their condition.
Very good, I like that idea.
You know, whether you come in with ABC, or 123, or diabetes, or Alzheimer's, it really doesn't matter. The name of the condition doesn't tell you how to treat it.
I see.
And so we just like people to say, "Let's just take the label off, be open-minded, have a positive attitude about this treatment, let's do the testing, and then see where we're at, and we'll let you know how we can, if we can, help you."
Even in complicated medical circumstances? Because so many seniors have, there are multiple issues, if you will, up to and including life-threatening cancers.
Absolutely, and we know our limitations as doctors on what to treat and what not to treat, and we prioritize things.
I see.
And so what's not in our interest, then we will leave up to the other professionals, and what we can help them with, we'll let them know.
Well, any improvement in attitude is certainly a good thing. And One Generation provides these great social settings, so there's interactivity with the people, and it's not just, "Oh, let me tell you about my operation, it's, this is what I learned yesterday, I picked up new computer skills." That's got to be very satisfying for you.
It is, and people tell us all the time, "This is my home, this is my family."
Oh.
That is rewarding.
You bet.
And then visitors to the centers say, "Wow, there's a lot of energy here." We think that states our case.
And it does, eloquently, because so often, people think, "Oh, they're own, they're set in their ways, and it's all just a short trip to the coffin," and go, "Wait a minute, you can have a rich and full life and kind of go out with a bang if you want to."
Yeah, he has a very energetic group there. It's really nice to talk to people who want information, who want to be helped, and who want to make their lives better.
Yes, and that is not age-dependent. You know, I can, I have seen it, you know, I've been doing this program for a while here, beyond family experience, and to watch people really become different people, it's as if their whole aspect changes. They're fun to be around.
I could show you some individuals in their 90s, and you would never know it by any of their behaviors nor their appearance.
Wow. And yet, we can't put in possibly high standards on seniors, we do have limitations, but nonetheless, it's kind of fun to have someone who's never played cards, for example, suddenly be part of a bridge group. How fun. And cards are fun, that keeps you sharp, too. I know some devastating poker players that are seniors. Is there a way to duplicate your program so that it becomes a common feature of our senior centers and the general care issues for seniors?
Sure, in fact, this doctor, Dr. Michael Johnson, who helped this program, who I learned from, he's got well over 400 doctors all across the country.
Wow.
That practice is very similar to what I do.
And that's quite a network, 400 doctors.
Yes, and it's very accessible, you can go to a website and find a doctor that may be in your area in any of the 50 states.
That's fabulous. Now, how do people contact you to get involved with this program? Is there a specific place they should go?
Sure, right now, we're doing these seminars over at One Generation every Tuesday.
But you have a website?
We have a website, yes, yes, it's DrKajiki.com.
DrKajiki.com, we'll put it up on the screen. I always tell you, have your pencil and paper ready. That's wonderful. Now, how can a caregiver assist you? A person who maybe is there in the home more often than you can visit, or that a patient can get to you?
Right, right. Well, they would be very primarily responsible for, what are they eating?
I see.
How often are they eating? Are they doing the brain exercises that we prescribe? That caregiver has actually more of a vested interest than maybe a parent does.
Yes, I understand, yes, speaking as a longtime caregiver, I get that. Unfortunately, that's all the time we have for Aging in L.A. today. Dr. Kajiki's website is www.DRKAJIKI.com, DrKajiki.com. Thanks to our guests, Dr. Gil Kajiki and Larry Lisenby, Director of One Generation Senior Enrichment Center. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and we want to hear your ideas for future programs. Please give us a call, the number's on your screen, 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas, we look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching, we'll see you the next time. So, thank you so much.
Good morning. Emergency Preparedness Patrol, is your family prepared for disaster?
Mom!
Emergencies can strike at any time. That's why it's important to have a family emergency plan in case you're separated during a disaster. Have an emergency supply kit ready with non-perishable food items such as dry goods, canned goods, and water. Don't forget extra medication for elderly family members! And extra pet food, too. Include a first aid kit, a battery-operated radio, extra batteries, and of course, a waterproof flashlight. And to reduce the risk of serious injury, fasten all freestanding items securely, including water heaters. This family gets a passing grade for being prepared. Emergency Preparedness, it's an L.A. thing.
My mom kept telling my dad to clear the brush from one of our houses, because it was a fire hazard, and clearing it could save our house someday. My dad kept saying he would do it someday, someday, someday. Then someday came, and it was too late, too late, too late. Don't wait until it's too late, clear the brush now.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting. It is 10:02, and we have a quorum. Welcome to members of the public, and thank you to members of the council for your attendance here today. We are expecting Ms. Hahn, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Rosendahl not to show up, they do have excused absences. That leaves Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Krikorian. And thank you, Mr. Cardenas is here, Mr. Krikorian's the only outstanding member. Thank you to members of the public who are here, and those watching us on Channel 35. There are five ways to follow your city council, live here in City Hall, in one of our remote city halls in San Pedro or Van Nuys, over the internet at lacity.org, through Channel 35 on the city's cable system, or through your telephone at 213-621-CITY. Our agendas are available in the back, and also in our remote City Hall locations in Van Nuys and San Pedro. With that, Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Karetz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, West, and Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Alakon second, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Karetz seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. Since we did not have a salute to the flag yesterday, colleagues, if I could ask everybody to rise for a pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Labange, if you'd be kind enough to lead us?
Thank you very much. I ask all to rise. Walter, if you could tell the young man there, thank you. Place your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to its justiceful.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Colleagues, if I can direct your attention through the agenda, if we can run through the agenda. For the public, all items that are before us have received either a public hearing in committee, or are agendized for a public hearing here. If they've already had a public hearing, you can fill out a card, but unless a council member reopens that public hearing, that will be just for council debate. For items that have not yet had a public hearing, a card from the public automatically triggers that hearing. We also have a time in the meeting for our general public comment, which we will hear on items not before the council today, but nevertheless under our jurisdictions. First items, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, items 1 through 4 are items known as for a public hearing. Item 3 is a PCN in Council District 2, and findings and recommendations are required.
Okay, that does require a motion. Why don't we wait, keep that on the desk till Mr. Krikorian's here. Other specials, 1, 2, and 4? 1, 2, and 4, do we have cards on it?
Pardon me, sir, you do have a card on item number 3.
Okay, we'll hold that for a card from the public. Mr. Krikorian, did you want to, we have a card, so that will require a motion when it comes up, but we have a card from the public on that, so we'll hear the card first, and then we'll hear if there's a motion on that. Mr. Cardenas?
Can you number 4 for Alakon till Friday?
Okay, Friday, January 26th, if there's no objection to continue, 28, excuse me, today's the 26th, we'll continue that till Friday, the 28th, that's item 4, without objection, so ordered. Anybody wishing to call 1 or 2 special? If nobody wishes to call items 1 or 2 special, let's go ahead and please open the roll, Madam Clerk. Please close the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved, next items, please.
Items 5 through 11 are items for which public hearings have been held. Council has requests to continue item 10 to January 28, and item 11 to February 2.
So any objection to those continuations, colleagues, item 10 and 11, 10 till the 28th this Friday, and 11 till Groundhog's Day? If not, let's go ahead and continue those. Specials, items 5 through 9, Mr. Labange?
Yeah, item number 8, if you could set it on the desk, I want to talk to city staff.
You got it. Mr. Labange calls 8 special, other specials? Seeing none, if we can take up the balance, please open the roll.
We can, we have Krikorian here, right?
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, those items 5, 6, 7, and 9 are approved, next items, please.
Items 12 through 27 are items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, if there's no objection to consideration, those items are now before us. Do we have cards on any of these items?
Yes, sir, we do.
Which numbers?
Items 12, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 27.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards on the public, we'll close the other public hearings. Mr. Krikorian?
Big special for continuance request, please.
Okay, till what day?
Continue it for a week.
One week?
February 18th.
February 18th, item 26, without objection, we'll continue till the 18th. Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Reyes. 18 for Mr. Smith, Mr. Reyes?
27 for special.
27 for Mr. Reyes. Any other specials, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Labange?
This is another question I'm following, Mr. President. Matters 10 and 11, could they be continued to the same day, February 2nd? I'm getting this inquiry request from the staff.
To the later date or the earlier date?
2/2, February 2.
Let's continue 10 till the 2nd, then February, if there's no objection.
And the other one to the 2nd is?
That was already on the 2nd, so we'll keep those both, the same date on the 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. That leaves the balance in the 12 to 27 items. If nobody else wishes to call additional special items, let's go ahead and take up the balance, please. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved, next item, please.
Fourth with, please?
Fourth with, without objection, Mr. Cardenas.
24.
Thank you.
Item 28 is an item scheduled for closed session, would you like to hold it on the desk?
I think we can do this in open session, Mr. Smith.
No, go ahead and prove that, there should be, unless there's objection, this is just a settlement of back taxes.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney, do you want to walk us through the settlement, or Mr. City Clerk?
Very good, sir. Item 28, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $541,666 in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus Jansen, Johnston, and Rockwell Court.
Mr. City Attorney, yes?
And that is the city accepting that amount of money.
We're taking that money in, just to be clear. Okay, so with that, okay, we'll call that special for the public. Next items, please.
Mr. President, item 9, fourth with, item 9, fourth with, please.
Without objection, we'll send 9 forthwith.
Thank you.
Can turn to the next items, beginning with item 28, colleagues.
On the continuation agenda, items 29 through 37 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, anybody wishing to call any of those items special, 29 through 37, Mr. Weezer?
Can we continue 37 for two weeks, please?
Okay, two weeks would take us to February 9th. If there's no objection, we'll continue 37 till the 9th of February. Other specials or continuances? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the balance, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approval, we'll send 29 forthwith, without objection, so, okay, next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, items 38 through 44 are items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
If there's no objection to consideration, that's before us, we have a card on 38, and no other cards, and a continuation request for item 40?
Mr. President, there are requests to send items, excuse me, to send item 29 forthwith, and to continue item 40 to February 9.
Okay, we'll send 29 again forthwith, and 40 will continue to the 9th of February, without objection. Call 38 special for a card, and that leaves us 39, 41 through 44. Any specials from those? Seeing none, let's go ahead then, and prepare the roll on the balance of those items, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Colleagues, we will go through the public comments now, and the, both the general public comments and the public comments on individual items. We'll start with John Walsh for public comment, and Arnold Sachs will follow.
Los Angeles City Council, welcome back to City Hall. You were missing in action for 24 hours. We were afraid you were gone. This is the, I want America to know, this is the highest-paid city council in America, or the world. They make $750 a day, whether they show up or not, and that's what I'm saying to every one of you, go dock yourself, go dock yourself. I'm asking, he's paying no attention, he's filing cards, Tricky Wiki Garcetti, Alakon is playing with himself, she's talking to somebody, if you do not-
Sir, sir, you cannot make items, you can make your comments of a sexual nature, sir, and you've been warned about that before. You have protected speech, no matter what you want, you have protected speech, but you cannot do items of, sir, lower your voice.
Listen.
We will have order in here, Mr. Walsh, we will have order in here. Mr. Walsh, until, Mr. Walsh, this is your last warning, until you get a hold of yourself, Mr. Walsh, get a hold of yourself. Sir, I, will you please remove Mr. Walsh from the, sir, if you cannot give order, then we will ask you to sit down. Just have him sit down, please, until you get a hold of yourself. Mr. Sachs is our next speaker. You're not being arrested, please have him sit down, and Mr. Sachs, if you'd like to come forward.
Being arrested.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sachs is our next speaker. Sir, just please take a seat, until you can get a hold of yourself, and then we'll be happy to hear your public comments on the other items. But when I've asked you to listen, I'm the presiding officer, and you need to be able to listen, you made items of a sexual nature, and we've told you of that before. Yes, you did. Mr. Sachs, go ahead.
Thank you, good morning. You're probably going to hear a lot of fallout about yesterday, it's another fiasco. The real question is, is what exactly is the penalty? We know that rules of decorum affect this side of the rope, but what about some rules on your side? Mr. President, I can't tell you how many times I quote you as, per according to the city council rules and regulations, you need to start the meeting at 10 o'clock. So what happens when somebody breaks the rules? Do you suffer any consequences? No. And what are the rules? They change from moment to moment, minute to minute. People stuck in traffic, all I can tell you is, call Metro. Oh, wait, they changed that. It's no longer dial 1-800-GO-METRO, it's something else, who knows? But if you dial 511, they'll tell you when the transit departure times are for your next bus. Now, what they spend on this program, I have no idea. They'll tell you when the bus is leaving on its route, but they're not going to tell you when the bus is going to get to your stop, which is the whole idea of why you'd be calling in the first place. So another program down the drain. It's amazing. I'd like to know, Mr. President, if you could consider, because we lose out showing up, I come, three trains, one bus, I get here at 10 o'clock. We need to have some benefit when you cancel meetings for lack of a quorum. I lose my two minutes of public comment, that is important to me. Sometimes I may sound like a dope, that's my problem, but sometimes I have some things to say that I feel are important, and when I lose those two minutes, I don't get them back. When you speak, you get your five minutes of time. Maybe you should say, five minutes when you make a motion, three minutes when you just want to yap. That would be helpful to the public.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Walter Bechtel, after that will be Matt Dowd.
Good morning. It's too bad we didn't make any comments about what the president was going to say the day before, or the day he was going to say something. But I just want to make mention, it was really peculiar that the security guards appeared to already know there wasn't going to be a quorum 10 minutes before that was determined. I just think it was rather suspicious, but you know, I'm a paranoid anyway. But, you know, the real problem, I think, isn't just not showing up on time, I think it's a general attitude in the city. I've had an appeal with the CRA that I filed in September of last year. You're supposed to answer that appeal within 60 days, it's been four months now. I think that you people feel that, also, when the Ford Hotel case was called in the Cup Meeting in March of 2008, there wasn't any quorum at all. And despite the fact there wasn't any quorum, the Cup Meeting and the people with the CRA decided that they would vote and approve of the project the way it was, without any public input at all. Now, that's the real issue, as far as I'm concerned, with quorum. If there isn't a quorum, you can't have a meeting. And as far as I'm concerned, the CRA and the general attitude of, we're getting away with these things, there's nothing you can do about it, there's nothing we're going to do about it, when it comes time to vote, I think everybody needs to remember here, you don't care about any quorum, not just in the city meeting, but in any, any meeting held in the city at all. You couldn't care less the meaning of quorum, a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel, appreciate your comments, Matt Dowd. Okay, Zuma Dog?
Thank you, Zuma Dog, Venice Beach, California. Everything I'm about to discuss is available to read at lacitynews.com. Right now, the breaking news, first of all, you know, I still haven't been settled at Venice Beach, and I came in here saying, "You haven't settled, I'm going to rock this place like a pit dog in a china shop," and I hit you as hard as I could. LAHD, Los Angeles Housing Department, I said I'm going to bring it down with the conflict of interest allegations regarding rent escrow. So, we have heard that there's an FBI investigation possibly into the Los Angeles Housing Department, and now I can tell you confirmed, I got a call last night, constituents from Los Angeles will be appearing this morning for a coffee clash with the FBI to discuss Los Angeles Housing Department racketeering conflict of interest allegations. How do you like that? Zuma Dog's blogging now triggered a possible FBI investigation. I don't know, maybe they just have general public comment, otherwise, they said to my constituents, "Yes, come on in, we'd love to hear what you have to say." So you should have settled, and I'm also here to say that no more talking about settlement. Nah, nah, we're taking this all the way, I'm taking y'all to the mat. So the other breaking news, Summary Judgment Day is here in the city of Los Angeles, it will be February 28th. City Attorney, City Attorney's Office, pencil it in. I called the judge's office yesterday, they called back right away, they said, "Yeah, February 28th is available, bring your asses on in here, we're going to take this city to the mat and teach-" to the mat and teach them a lesson like they've never seen before. So do not try to settle, it's going all the way. All right? Now, the medical marijuana ordinance, oh, yeah, medical marijuana, get ready, it's going to be the Wild, Wild West. As soon as that three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand bond is posted, Zuma Dog and everybody will be opening up collectives, and the City Attorney's Office can no longer function over this. Bad news for the city in two thousand and eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Our next speaker is in Van Nuys, and it is Ron Cristinelli. A very good morning to you, sir.
Good morning. This is the first time I've come to a city council meeting here in Van Nuys.
Welcome.
I'm going to talk just briefly about the furloughs. Of course, the city has a budget problem, and we are, one of the items on the table is furloughs for city employees. Now, yesterday, we had a city council meeting that was suspended, canceled because the city council couldn't get a quorum. Well, how about a proposal that if the city council can't do its job and can't come to work, that the city council and its staffs be given a day of furlough without pay and save the taxpayers and the citizens of Los Angeles some money, so that if you want to take as many days off, you just cancel the council meetings. And, you know, I think that would be, to help the city budget. The city workers have to take a day off, and, you know, against their will, so if the staff, I'm sorry, if the council members can't come to their meeting and get a quorum and do city business, why should we be paying your salaries? Why should you get a day off with pay? And, you know, that would help the city budget, it would save some money, and you should set an example, you know, and if you have an integrity, you would do the right thing and decide that you're going to, you and your staffs will have the day off if you can't be here to do the city business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I'm sorry our clock is not working out there, but I'll give speakers in Van Nuys a heads up when you're at one minute and then at thirty seconds. Appreciate your comments, and also know that almost all council staffs do take unpaid furloughs right now as well, but appreciate your comments. Rick Nightingale is in Van Nuys as well, he's our next speaker. Very good morning to you, Mr. Nightingale.
Good morning, Rick Nightingale. You know, it was really something, Matt, how long, the other day, when Montel Williams turns around, gets up and starts crying and all that stuff. I realize he has a disease, I feel sorry. I don't even think he lives in the city of Los Angeles, I think he's back in New York. Must come out here because this is a drug capital now. But, you know, I'd sure like to get as much time on as he does, I guess I'm just not famous like he can, to come in and make a speech like that. But, I'm sorry, you know, it was a situation to help the needy that had the disease. I could even turn around and go down and get a prescription. I've had a bad back since I was twenty-three years old, and I get headaches, and I got, and I pulled both sides of my sacroiliac and crura vastum vertebreis. But I still went into construction and worked every day and made a very good living at it. And all these people coming in sniveling and so forth and so on, I'm sorry, but you go to a doctor, but they abused the situation so much that it's just unbelievable, that now they even flaunt it in the news, they're smoking dope and all that stuff in front of the cameras, and they don't need it, it's just a thing that they can turn around and get high legally. Now, let's go to the CRA. I could not believe what I read Sunday in the paper. They drew everything out to the CRA. I never believed that this was so corrupt, that it's unbelievable. Now, look at what the, like, the state has given two, over two billion dollars to it, and what the city council does, and everybody is starving, but you won't cut back on the CRA crap. No way, you just keep on giving it. For the blight area, if you want a shopping center, it's just whoever puts you in their pocket. That's all it is. It's just whoever rubs your back the right way. It's just unbelievable. When I read that article, I couldn't believe it. Finally, somebody got gumption and put it in the paper that somebody else knew what was going on. That everybody else is starving, but no, you won't cut anything back in the CRA.
Thank you, sir.
You, am I over?
Go ahead, if you, you can finish that sentence, go ahead, my apologies, I didn't-
I appreciate what you're asking, people, give a thirty-second notice, because we don't have anything. But I'm just saying that you turn around and will not do anything about that, and I don't understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Also, for Ms. Pearman and Ms. Fogler, item forty was continued, so I just wanted to let you know, because I know there's not a staff member out there today. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker for general public comment, then we'll come back, and Teresa Marquez will be our next speaker here in chambers.
Well, you know, I've been coming here since, God knows, probably since the eighties, and I've been fighting the CRA. People, you people haven't listened to me, and Howard, Howard Watts used to come here, and Ernie Bernardi, Council Bernardi used to be on the city council, Christopher, and he was my councilman for the district that I used to live in. And he used to fight this agent, he put a cap on him, two-point-four million dollars. And here you guys lifted the two-third vote in the Sacramento for a majority vote, so you can keep on spending with the CRA, so you can keep giving them money, 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 money. It's like, you know, that StarTech episode is, the people used to bring the food up to the cave and used to throw the food in there and keep feeding those people more and more and more and more. They said they're not going to help the city, they sat here and said they, and admissionally said, and, you know, absolutely, we're not going to help you people, nothing, we're going to have to take all our money for ourselves. And that's what the CRA is all about, self-interest, to make the rich richer and make the poor poorer. People who are in poverty, who are homeless, are homeless because of the CRA.
Forty seconds left, Miriam.
Yeah, and then you turn around, you want to blame the city workers to give you back money to the city, sacrifice? Talking about sacrifice, the CRA doesn't sacrifice for the city workers, they're working for them, they should be. So, you know, so what I'm saying is, right now, folks, that city workers shouldn't have to give up no benefits, matter of fact, you're going to have cost the CPI going up because the gas price is going up, because you many people are making it happen.
Ten seconds left.
Well, thank you. I'm just letting you know, you don't have a time living on yourselves, you go ahead and take days off whenever you want with pay. That's got to stop. You need to put the money back into the city and stop asking city workers to give any more.
Teresa Marquez will be our next speaker here in council chambers. Ms. Marquez? And then after that is Donna Pearman back in Van Nuys. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, again.
If you just wouldn't mind moving the microphone down a little bit, we can hear you a little better. Yeah, there you go, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, I want to ask everybody here, my name is Teresa Marquez, I'm from Boyle Heights, third generation in Boyle Heights, and I'm an activist in Boyle Heights since the seventies. I only care about the quality of life for our community, I don't care about money or politics. And I'm going to ask you to please ask our councilman, Weisar, to give us all the information on the clock fund, including what he's going to do in the future with it. And we want transparency. Transparency means you're going to tell us what you're going to do and allow us to have some say to it. And the list, I'm on the list, God knows what my number is now, probably a minus ten, okay? But I don't care what my rating is, but I do care about the community and the people that are on it. That's very disrespectful, Jose, and that's what you represent in Boyle Heights, you have no respect for our community. That list shows exactly what our councilman has been doing for the last five years. I fight not to have any more liquor licenses. I work at this without pay, it's all volunteer, I'm retired, yet our councilman has never said, come here, we, let's get together and let's work together on this and make some kind of concessions as to how we're going to continue the businesses here in Boyle Heights, but reduce the liquor licenses. No, I have approached him, he's never approached me. Now he has a coalition, Boyle Heights Coalition, they got half a million dollars to work on liquor, education, and so on. You think that I'm part of it? No. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is in Van Nuys, Donna Pearman. Good morning, Ms. Pearman.
I'm back. Anyway, I think it was terrible what you did yesterday, first allowing too many council members to take off, so you're down to bare minimum. Mr. Garcetti, you have to find those who are late, like Councilman Corretts. This costs the city more money. I don't want the, I didn't want to take off today, I'm using annual leave, but I'll have to talk against the CRA corruption, the Corruption Redevelopment Agency, CRA. We spend millions, billions of dollars on the CRA, just today, now, we only have one project because you continue the other. We are in such a deficit, talking about furloughs for some employees. Let's put the city council on furlough. How can you have the city save money when you have the CRA and all these redevelopment projects? And I see here on the Sunday paper, nine-hundred-and-thirty million on this one project that you're going to be having today, and I forgot what the other amount was, somewhere in the millions. They said, I believe also that Governor Brown is right to go against the CRA, because they drain an increasing amount of tax revenue from the other services, and he wants to get rid of the redevelopment agency in enterprise zones, a state program of tax incentives-
Forty-five seconds left, Donna.
Okay, anyway, we have five billion dollars in annual tax revenue, and Garcetti, if I were you, I wouldn't, I would keep you down to city business and don't go into areas with the guns that you don't know anything about. This is the Second Amendment rights, and I don't see why you're, and I totally disagree with the article you wrote. And Friday, you're going to talk about the gun issue, and we need to be able to protect ourselves. It's like when those nuts come down in Arizona, if somebody was able to gun them down, and any-
We need firepower against monsters like him.
Yeah, we need to have firepower against monsters like him, and we need to go against the CRA and not have any furloughs for the city employees.
Thank you very much, Donna, and just again, the city, almost all city council staffs and city council members do take unpaid furloughs, like the rest of the city staff that are on those as well, just want to put that on the record as well. That is our last public speaker. Oh, Mr. Dowd is now here, would you like to speak on public comment?
Good morning. Yes, oh, yes, thank you, Channel Thirty-Five, I was just saying to the city attorney, just be my witness-
We can hear you better, a little further away, I promise we won't be turning it down, but we can hear you a little better usually.
See, there's an interruption, these have compressor limiters, you can hear everything. I was talking to the attorney, saying, just don't, anyway, we're trying to crunch something down here, but, and, you know, and here's, here's, here's one sticking point they came back at us. I asked them for sixty-six dollars a day lost income for my performers off the beach. Sixty-six dollars a day, it's like fifteen-hundred a month, and it's totally in line with what Michael Hunt got out of the federal jury for five months. We're twenty-nine months under this thing. And they're, oh, can you come up with tax returns, and like, who files a tax return if you're making thirty dollars a day? Because that's all these guys were making when they lost sixty-six. So they, you know, they were ruined, like Zuma was making nothing, we got problems, so many things we couldn't pay for that we would have been able to pay for, because we're spending the money on gas and maintenance and things to come down here for two and a half years over this current one. See, the Michael Hunt case, that's in the appeal court, your attorney, Todd Lungie, got carved up by the Ninth Circuit judges, the three of them, one of them was African-American, they loved Michael Hunt, that decision is on the front burner, ready to come out, and that Ninth Circuit appeal language will, you know, that's the fire that we're playing with, that will set everybody on the beach onto you with all their attorneys. So, I'm trying to organize something right now, but let me tell you, the judge called, we called the judge for a status conference, and they called back and said, no, just go for summary judgment if you're not getting anywhere. That's what they said, they called me.
That will close our general public comment, as our custom will go through the public comment now for all the other items, but first, Mr. Zine, I think we'd like to say something for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd just like to, since people have asked where I was yesterday, I was officially excused, I was at a funeral for the captain of Van Nuys Division, Bill Eaton, who passed away. Also, Mr. McCarrion was at that funeral for the retired, retired, the deceased captain, forty-four years of age, died of cancer. I know he's adjourned in his memory, and that's why I wasn't, that's what Mr. McCarrion would yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. We've, we'll usually just go in the order, but item twenty-two, Ms. Perry has asked if we take those public comments first. John Walsh is our first speaker on twenty-two, and then Deborah Cantor.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, is this low enough for you? Because I don't like in America to be taken away off this podium for being too loud. Item twenty-two, item twenty-two. And I'm telling you right now, on item twenty-two, that Ms. Perry has raised this item, this is the Broad Collection. We are about to give, through the CRA, fifty-two million dollars to Eli Broad. Eli Broad, and incidentally, this is what's happening, HollywoodHighlands.org, Butner is leaving next month. Eli Broad is running him for mayor. He already told Antonio, you can find this on my blog, last month he's leaving, he's following. You cannot find this anyplace else. Butner's job is finished when he gets this fifty-two million dollars into Eli Broad's pocket for this third-rate collection of art. Now, when over at the county, Mike Antonovich said, we're not going to lease for one dollar property to Broad, he gave seven million dollars for low-cost housing, Broad, to the CRA, and took a tax deduction for it. And now we're giving him, is it too loud? He's paying no attention, he's paying no attention, Garcetti, he's writing something.
Sir, I'm listening to everything you're saying.
You're not, you're listening to everything. You can do two things at one time, okay? What I'm telling you right now is Garcetti is mad as hell at Broad, because he thought Broad was going to put money in his campaign. That's what's going on now. Butner is running for mayor. This is, if you want to know what's happening in the city, go to HollywoodHighlands.org, thirty-seven thousand visitors a week. And you can arrest me, you can rape me, you can kill me, I am a man.
That will take us to our next speaker, just for the record, again, Mr. Walsh was not removed for speaking too loud, it was for initially lewd comments and then disrupting the meeting. Deborah Cantor is our next speaker, and then Miriam Fogler will follow in Van Nuys.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. I'm here on behalf of the Broad Contemporary Art Museum on Grand Avenue, and I'm, we are pleased to be able to assist the city with the development of Grand Avenue. We believe the public improvements that are described in this proposal will go a long way toward improving the fabric of the city. And this proposal builds upon the council's July fifteenth approval of the Broad Contemporary Art Museum, and I'm pleased to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, we'll see if there's any questions for you. Anything else you'd like to say?
No, thank you very much.
Miriam Fogler is our next speaker in Van Nuys, after that is Zuma Dog here in City Hall. Ms. Fogler, you're the next speaker on item twenty-two. I'll give you the one-minute warning and then thirty seconds.
You better be glad you didn't miss me on this one. Folks, I've been telling you people since nineteen-eighties, Ernie Bernardi and Howard Watts, you people are running a bigger scam with this whole thing with the CRA, you people put everything in their hands, you know, this is privatizing government at its best. What you're doing is you're taking away the, from the people and giving this over to just for the rich. Remember back in the old days, before time, and this is the reason why they're working on taking away your gun rights, folks, beware. Don't let them cut your clips down, don't let them pass any laws against how much, the size of weapons you can have. I'm warning you, they're doing the same thing here. The CRA wants to, and the politicians are all working together, they're all in the legal cities, they're all the mayors, they're all working on taking away your rights, this is one, is to tax you to death, okay? They're going to tax you to death, and you're going to fall for it, and you're going to allow them to take away, limit your amount, the size of weapons. I'm telling you, the CRA here, all they want to do is take all the land away, take everything away from the private people, and kick them out in the streets, whatever they do to get it, they making the money, that's all they care about. So this is, this is the biggest, worst thing, and it's nationwide. Beware. Watch out for them. I'm telling you right now, we need to do something now, what the lady said the other day, we need- What the lady said the other day, we need to bring them out in the open full, full force. Because they're going after our gun rights, and this crazy nut in Arizona wants to challenge with the government.
Thirty seconds left on it.
And cannot do it that way, folks. We have to do it through, through our way of doing petitioning, our voting and everything else. We need to sell, stamp this guy out his way. We must not let him win. That Lofner guy must not win. We cannot limit the size of our weapons so that he can take away our rights. That's exactly what Lofner wants. And he didn't win because it's a failure. You should have killed yourself, Mr. Lofner.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, that will, remember, we are here discussing item 22 before, so if we can keep on that topic. Mr. Dogg.
Yes, thank you, city council, and to the good people of Los Angeles watching at home today. I've never been happier to be at this podium to expose a city council agenda item. What we have here is the biggest outrage I've ever seen in my effing career as a gadfly. All right, now, remember that Jerry Brown, the governor, that I would not want to piss off, wants that money back into the city, not for redevelopment, but to provide services like fire that you're not able to provide. And I'm going to get to the on-topic. So for the people at home, now they want to take $52 million for a parking garage and museum of Eli Broad. Now, this money is supposed to be for blight. It's right next door to City Hall and LAPD. Is this blight downtown? Um, and is this a city that is in need of an Eli Broad fancy schmancy museum downtown? Let's take a vote by a show of hands. I don't think there's a person in this damn city that would say they want to spend $52 million for a stupid gosh damn museum of Eli Broad. Go screw yourself, Eli Broad.
Sir, if you could please control yourself and lower your voice. Thank you.
Any of you that vote for this, I will make sure that the whole city knows you voted in this crisis to give Broad $52 million for a stupid museum and parking garage, and this money could be used for fire, police, potholes, graffiti, every department, everything that you are firing people for. And Greg Smith, that sourpuss loser who's been wrong every step of the way, is shaking his head no. I'm here to tell you that this money could be released to the general fund by the Governor Jerry Brown. Hey, Greg Smith, you're a historic loser, you jackass Brown.
Sir, sir, hey, kick Mr. Dogg out of here. We have warned you about making personal insults that is in the code of conduct, that is there on the podium, and sir?
If I'm still growing.
Sir, please remove Mr. Dogg. Our, our next speaker is Donna Perman in Van Nuys.
Do I continue?
No, sir, you've been warned before.
Uh, okay. Uh, it's Donna Perman. I really like, uh, what, uh, Zuma Dogg had to say. I hope he, uh, somebody tells him over there, tell him that, uh, me and Miriam Fogler really likes what he says to say, because I agree with him. This is ridiculous. $52 million, billion, million dollars for, uh, for the museum, to renovate a museum that was all done incorrectly in the first place. I heard that, um, that the lights were not up to code, and that just because they wanted to cut corners and safety, they didn't care about that. Now we want to spend $52 million on the CRA project, and I remember the CRA project was done a long time ago, and it took a long time to make. They were spanning it out so that we'd be sure to spend more money on this project, a lot more than was necessary. I mean, who would think that would take that long, about 10 or 15 years, to build up all these projects, and it's still not done because it took so long? Now they have to renovate it. That's totally wrong, totally wrong. But of course, uh, you're not going to go against the CRA because you're owned by the CRA, they're your bosses.
That's their bosses.
So I, I'm talking about the whole city council right now, so you know. So I, we, we putting city employees on furlough.
The names that contribute the money.
Like, oh, yeah, we could do that. Uh, anyway, um, uh, let's see what it was.
Thirty seconds left on it.
Oh, okay, so we need to not go against, uh, we need to stop going against, we need to go against the CRA because we can't put these city employees on furlough. We can't keep on asking the sacrifice and asking them to go up on their medical and going up, doing this, and as long as the CRA is stealing all the money, I don't trust anything and no sacrifice, not anything, not one iota. No sacrifice at all, as long as you keep on going against the CRA.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Rick Knightengale is our next speaker, also in Van Nuys.
Yeah, on the CRA, obviously. Uh, I worked on that Grand Avenue project years ago, and I'll tell you, I did do, install electric, uh, lights that were made down in Mexico that weren't U.L. approved. Uh, yeah, my hands are all cut up from the sharp metals and so forth, because they turned around and put it in, and then after, I can't remember how many years it was, eight or 10 years, then they donated to the city so they could make their money, and then they donated it back to you people. And then now you want to do a great big remodel of it. If, it's, this is just like, um, you're sitting with a family, and you lose your job, and so you're, you're penny pinching to turn around and survive, and then here comes the, your other, rest of your family turns around, gets laid off, and you invite them over, but they have no money. So now you turn around and you bring these people in, I granted, they're family, but you got to look out for your kids and your wife. That's your responsibility as the man of the house.
One minute left, sir.
This is what your job is, is to watch out for the house. And you turn around and letting all the other families in, and then they'll all go down, and you starve and you die. This is the situation that you people are doing. You keep putting all this money in the CRA where it goes elsewhere. You can use it elsewhere. You shouldn't have any new projects going at all, none, to pay your bills. That's the problem. Nobody knows how to pay their bills. They don't know how to sacrifice. If you haven't started the job, you don't do anything about the job. You cancel it. Even if you pay a penalty, you cancel it because you can't afford to do the job. This is what your job is for, and you people aren't doing your job. That's why you need to be all replaced because you don't know how to do your job, because you haven't been in real life and earned a regular living except for the people keep paying for what you're doing. Thank you.
That will close our general public comment on number 22. Ms. Perry.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd also like to ask David Ricatello of the Community Redevelopment Agency, just to come up to the center table for a quick minute. Uh, before you today, members, is an action which allows for expanded scope of work regarding the Broad Museum and the Grand Avenue project. The expanded scope of work includes a larger parking structure with 370 spaces, a public plaza, and the improvement of sidewalks on Grand Avenue. The expansion of the garage allows for the relocation of the main automobile entrance exit on Second Street, and also the installation of a second automobile entrance exit on Cozy Coop Way. This will make the garage more functional and better for a pedestrian environment. The public plaza will be approximately 35,000 square feet, and will, and it will be accessible to the public serving as a connection from the museum to the proposed Bunker Hill Metro Station and the existing Civic Center Metro Station. There has been some discussion that the city is rushing into this, into this expanded scope of work without fully analyzing the impacts. It should be noted for the record that these public improvements have always been considered as part of the Grand Avenue project before the Broad Museum was even an idea. So as you know, the Grand Avenue project has been thoroughly vetted, uh, and we're moving forward on these additional components. That includes the Grand Avenue Park, which is currently under construction, and the public improvements that we are considering today along with the Broad Museum. Additionally, the Redevelopment Agency has submitted a 2011 MTA call for projects application that will enable us to do a better job of moving people from the proposed downtown regional connector to the project and then up Grand Avenue. The great difference between the station proposed for Second and Hope Street and Second Street and Grand Avenue is significant. The redesigned parking garage will have a proposed elevator component that will move transit passengers from the garage entrance across the street, from the station to Grand Avenue Plaza. The extended, expanded scope of the project, including the larger parking facility, public plaza, and Grand Avenue sidewalk improvements, will create an additional 1,340 jobs. These are jobs that will again put residents back to work, and I hope you'll be able to support this today.
Thank you. Mr. Kardnis is our next speaker.
Um, I have a question. Just recently, there was a very, um, earth-shattering announcement by our new Governor Brown that he was looking to enact policy at the state level with the cooperation of the legislature to eliminate, uh, the CRA, um, process in the state of California, and also enterprise zones, et cetera. And what we're looking at right here is $52 million in CRA funds. How much of those funds are currently, uh, held within CRA, and how much of that is projected? And if any of that is projected funds into the future, what happens if the legislature and the governor eliminate the CRA capacity for, for the city and for the state?
Um, the agency currently has a, has had approximately 22 million available for public improvements for the Grand Avenue project. We've already advanced eight of that to Broad for covered costs related to the design of the parking facility that they're going to be building for the CRA and conveying eventually to the CRA for our ownership and operation. Uh, that leaves a balance of approximately 23 to 24 million that will be paid out of future tax increment. Uh, if the council approves this agreement today, this would constitute a debt of the agency for which we can collect TI in the future to repay that debt. The risk, uh, right now is that our TI estimates in a lot of our project areas are in the decline, and there's a possibility that there would not be sufficient TI flow in Bunker Hill to cover that remaining obligation. So that's where the risk lies.
Okay, the, you, you, you outlined pretty good the, the risk if the TI doesn't come in. Basically, the developer, in this case, Mr. Broad, would have to figure out how to make up the difference, correct?
That's correct.
However, if they do that full swoop action at the state level, how would that affect the projections into the future of the remaining amount?
Well, I'm not sure I'm the best person to answer that question, but I understand that any existing debt that redevelopment agencies have, they'll be able to, they'll, the successor agencies, which is, I think is called out in the legislation, is enabled to collect TI to cover those debt obligations. Our biggest debt in Bunker Hill is bonds that were floated in prior years. Most of that money was used to build affordable housing throughout the city of Los Angeles. So we'll be able to continue to collect TI to meet those debt obligations through the year 2023.
Okay, so basically, it's your understanding that if there was something that took place prior, and it was a commitment that was made, such as the bonds, to pay out those bonds, that that will continue? It doesn't appear that the state would affect that, that ability, correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
But, so wouldn't this particular action today, should we vote for this, wouldn't this fall in the same category, since it's prior to any legislation that would make swooping changes?
Yes, that's my understanding as well. On this actually, it becomes a debt of the agency.
Okay, becomes a debt of the agency. So, um, I'll push my button again, Mr. President. I'm out of time.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I want to thank Jan Perry for her tireless effort here. Often in the days that I have opportunity, whether it's someone constituent or a delegation, I go to the tower and look over this downtown in our city, and the work that is being transformed is to be a credit to your, to your pressure on making it happen, Jan. As chairman of the Arts and Parks Committee, I've reviewed this matter, and this is going to be an accelerant to the beauty of downtown, an accelerant to help downtown and connect the cathedral to the Civic Center, which our Civic Center is the largest civic center outside of Washington, D.C. This is a very important transformation through the Disney Hall to the, this, the Broad Museum. And this is basically the parking structure, if I understand it. Basically similar to what happened to Disney Hall. And if you remember, which not all of us were here back then, we built the parking structure for Disney Hall, and then in better times, and, and work from Mr. Broad and others put their own money into the creation of Disney Hall. So there's commitments that have been made. This is an investment in Los Angeles, an investment in art that goes further than just the quarter that is being built on. And the CRA and this particular individual who's sitting at the center table is one of those tough individuals that doesn't sit there and just say, we got to make this happen. You've looked at it, and it's good for the city of Los Angeles, right, David? So, members, I stand to support this good addition to the downtown center. And as of my way in this morning, I went through Angelino Heights Head, and as I went through Angelino Heights, I saw some of the old homes that once were there at Bunker Hill. So it's funny how in your day, you pass certain parts of time in Los Angeles. This is this time for this place to get the support of the CRA and the city council to move forward, to enhance the opportunity for what the Broad Museum as a transformative connects. And I know right now that Tom Bradley, and I don't say that often, and John Frawl, and Gil Lindsay especially, are smiling to see what's happening in the transformation of downtown. Like, say, and I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kretz.
Yeah, just a question for the record. It was, it was suggested by several members of the public that we could just take the money from the CRA, put it in the general fund, and help apply it to our shortfall. Can that be done?
I'm not, I don't believe that can be done, but I'm not the expert in that area. I think that's a city attorney question.
Or C.L.A.
If we could have appropriate staff answer that question, just for the record.
Uh, Mr. Kretz, those monies are tax increment dollars. Uh, under redevelopment law, those funds must actually go to the CRA as proposed by the governor. If CRAs were dissolved and the monies were shifted, the city of L.A. would actually still get some portion of it as part of their regular property tax allocation. But under existing law, those monies must go to the CRA and must be used for that purpose. There is a small amount, uh, what is commonly called as the AB 1290 funds. Those are general fund dollars. I don't have the amount, um, of that, but that could, in theory, be applied to the general fund budget. Uh, if I remember correctly, it's only about $10 million each year that would be available that could be used to, um, offset the general fund budget deficit.
So the people that are looking at this specific project and saying, $52 million, why don't we just stick it in the general fund and solve our problems, uh, it, it clearly isn't that simple, and it wouldn't be legal to do that, is my understanding.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to rise and applaud Councilperson Perry for getting it to this point, and all the different decision-makers involved a very complicated process. But there's something I would like to, I'm hoping you can give us a number or a ballpark We heard very clearly that $52 million will be spent on, on this investment. Can you give us the economic multiplier effect, the dollar amount that can be generated because of the jobs created, because of all the ancillary impacts that this facility would bring to downtown area, to local neighborhoods, if, indeed, the region? But is there a number that we could look at or isolate? Because I think it's critical. Yes, $52 million is a lot of money. It's a crucial element of a complicated formula, but the benefit, the economic benefit is real as well. And I would like to amplify that number, because there's a reason why we're doing this. It's creating jobs, it's creating revenue, increasing our tax base. I mean, but is there a dollar figure we can point to?
Um, good afternoon, Councilman Reyes. In our initial board action, we indicated that the L.A. County Economic Development Commission estimated that the initial project would have economic impacts of more than $234 million in direct, indirect, and induced revenues.
$234 million.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
And that's a, a total of 1,340 jobs.
Great.
I'd also like to comment that the $52 million is for public improvements, which, which includes a 370 parking, um, stock, parking garage that the agency will own and operate, and all the revenues from that park, parking operation will accrue to the city. So we're, the Broad, uh, collect, the Broad Collection is building these public improvements, which the, the CRA and the city will own and benefit from. So it's not, we're not giving $52 million, but we're paying, through this arrangement with the Broad Collection, we're receiving in exchange assets valued at approximately $52 million with interest.
So $52 million, streets, sidewalks, parking garage.
Right.
And it generates a $234 million economic impact in the context of jobs and, and goods and services, and new facades, new businesses, new restaurants, all the anc- services and new facades, new businesses, new restaurants, all the ancillary effects of this investment. I just want to make that very clear, because it's important to amplify that.
Another note is that we're estimating that the visitors generated by the museum to downtown itself is approximately 200,000 a year. So we're looking at significant business travel and visitor travel as a result of the museum.
200,000 visitors coming into the central area.
As a result of the museum, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Let me too start by thanking Ms. Perry and the CRA for their incredible work on this. And I think, you know, I've had a lot of members of the media or constituents of mine kind of say, "How can you step up right now and be giving money to a billionaire when there's cuts in fire department and things like that?" And I think it bears saying over and over again what this is and how those two do or do not relate to one another. Redevelopment money is separate from our city's general fund, which is for our fire and our police. Redevelopment money, if you believe in it or when it's successful, helps spur projects and economic development that otherwise would not occur without that money. But in exchange, that helps lift up the economy. When that happens, you get more sales tax, you get more parking tax, you get more hotel tax, you get more utility tax, and then that helps our general fund. We can, you know, I think, was it the President last night who said, "We can kind of cut off the engines of a plane, and you feel like you're soaring for a moment, but then you suddenly wonder why you're falling down"? That's exactly what we have to be looking at. We have to call bad redevelopment, bad redevelopment, when we see it, and we have to also embrace good redevelopment when we see it as well. It's important to say that this plaza and parking was something planned long before there was a museum. I appreciate you saying that, Ms. Perry, because I think a lot of people think this is going to subsidize the museum. This is something that was going to be there, that was in the planning. The CRA, Ms. Perry, the community have asked for and worked for for a long time. And just to end, you know, in looking at even what the President said last night in the State of the Union, that three things, we're going to help America come back. We had to innovate, educate, and build our way out of this. Having a museum here, and when we think of Los Angeles, what do we have that is a competitive advantage to every other city in the world? It is our culture. It is that arts economy that is linked here to Los Angeles, to a million people who will come to the Kodak Theatre starting this summer to see a Cirque du Soleil show that they otherwise would not have, that helped save the Cirque du Soleil from Canada when it was about to go under because this was an art center. It's those people who are coming here from New York because the contemporary art scene is now most here in Los Angeles than any other city in the world. Those 200,000 visitors who then allow people to have jobs that are close by, transit that's close by, and all of those good things. So it's tough, because it's very easy in an economic and budget environment to kind of say, "Oh, tax money for billionaires instead of for our core services." Mr. Broad has stepped up with an incredible art collection that will be a magnet for people around the world to come here and stay here and spend money here. And we have protected ourselves to make sure that what we were putting public money in was for a public good plan long before that museum was even on the table. So thank you, Ms. Perry, for steering through what is choppy, not only city waters sometimes, but county waters as well in the downturn of our economy, and Mr. Broad for stepping up and being a part of this. I urge you all to support.
Mr. Alacon.
Mr. Zine, we were having a little conversation when you mentioned the parking garage, and some people might have said, "Well, why are we building parking garages when we're selling or trying to lease our parking operations?" And so we know that CRA does parking a little bit different. Can you explain how the parking garage situation works with regard to how the CRA operates it and what the city benefits from that?
Well, this would be operated as a public parking garage, so the city would receive the tax revenues generated by the parking, those parking in the facility itself. In this instance, we'll actually own the parking facility, but we will have an operator put in place to operate it on our behalf. Our estimates are showing that the parking revenue generated by this garage would be more than sufficient to cover its operating costs, so it shouldn't represent no drain on CRA resources and actually not on the city, since they're not liable for any of those costs. We have participated in the past in assisting parking developments. For example, we helped finance some of the parking in City Court Plaza. We also helped finance two parking garages in the historic Coors, Bobbery Spring Center, and the Main Street Garage. And we've done some parking facility assistance in the Hollywood project area. So we have on occasion used our ability to help finance and construct parking to help facilitate development in our project area.
Now, maybe you're not in a position to answer this question, but how does that compare to how the city is trying to sell off our parking?
This is slightly different, because this parking is, and contemplating it's part of a master plan development, so this parking is actually going to serve a larger development once it occurs. And we're actually in active negotiations with the master developer for the Grand Avenue Project, which is the related company, on developing a residential tower adjacent to the museum. That would be 250 units of rental housing, with 20% of that would be affordable, and this parking would help support that development. So we look at parking help support development is how we're viewing this one.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
All right. Just, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to close, thank you again, Mr. Gattello and your colleague for coming to the table and answering people's questions. Again, I want to reemphasize that this was part of the, this is part of the plan, the Grand Avenue Plan. These improvements need to be done. This is a rare opportunity to take what was already planned and use it in a most advantageous way to the redevelopment city and to get this project done, to elevate it to a higher level, to build the public improvements, to bring the infrastructure, and obviously to bring the jobs, and to do what we say, which is actually link the public transportation together in a manner which should encourage more people to come here by public transportation because of the intermodal connections. And I hope that we all see the wisdom of that and give us an I vote today.
We have one public speaker, and this is Arnold Sachs. We will take the vote.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Nice to hear the reports, before I get a chance to speak. So, all the jobs that are being created, this Councilman Labonge said parking will be necessary because you have the Cathedral. The Disney Center, recession, 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 we need jobs, jobs, jobs. Weren't these jobs needed last year? Wouldn't these be available? It's just a coinkydink that you're going to have the $52 million come up at this time, maybe a couple of months after the museum went through. Remember, Eli Broad put his name on the paperwork to get the down, the Civic Center development pushed forward. Then he took his name off of the paperwork. He's no longer associated with the related project. By the way, how's that going? Have you even gotten any funding and fines from them? This is absolutely baloney.
That completes public comment on this item. Colleagues, the vote is now up. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. And now we will go to the public comment on remaining items on the agenda. Mr. Labonge.
The matter I laid on the desk, it's been resolved. Clarification from our planning. Could we call up item eight?
Item number
So planning can get back to their planning job?
Item number eight. Someone here for that item?
No, no. I called it special to get a question. I got the question answered.
Okay, so you want to vote on it then, Mr. Labonge? Okay. So seeing no questions on number eight, no cards on number eight. On number eight, colleagues, open the roll.
You're welcome.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, we will now go into the cards on the remaining items. Hear from the public speakers on those. Item number three, John Walsh, number three.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S. Yes, not yet another liquor license. We have more liquor licenses per square foot in LA than any place in America. This is for a CVS pharmacy, a retail drugstore located 5600 Van Nuys. People who live there, watch out. Your neighborhood is under siege. And I'd like to point out that liquor licenses is a license to sell poison. I'm telling you right now. I'm glad that Mr. Alacon is listening to me. And I'd just like to point out that Fricky Ricky Garcetti has left the chamber. He's on his knees in front of Eli Broad's representatives. One minute.
On that item, Mr. Clerk, I understand a motion needs to be made?
Yes, sir, a motion is required. Perhaps this matter should be continued to a future date.
Mr. City Attorney?
I believe there is a request to continue this item. I don't know if that's been communicated.
Now, Mr. Kocorian?
Continuance.
A continuance, okay.
One week.
One week, okay. On that item, we will continue it one week. Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Okay, our next item is number 12. Arnold Sachs, number 12. Arnold Sachs passes. Zumadog, Zumadog is left. Now, go number 18. 18, Zumadog, Zumadog is left. On item number 18, I believe that was an item on 12. On 12, open the roll on 12. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Smith?
On 18.
Pardon me?
18.
18. You have a question?
No, I had a question. Mr. Parks has a question. We ask to be removed to Friday's agenda.
You want to move 18 to Friday. All right, without objection, move 18 to Friday. And the next item will be number 19. Arnold Sachs, number 19. Matt Dowd has left. He'll be, Zumadog is left on 19. So, Mr. Sachs, you're the only one on 19.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sachs. Just as Councilman Alacon questioned the wisdom of why the redevelopment agency is getting in a parking lot, parking lot business, when we hear the City Council and the mayor say the city's not in the parking lot business, you want to establish a personal pool of 90-day hires. Yet you're considering, you already have 26 furlough days, and you're considering 10 more furlough days. You're considering shutting down departments one day a week. So please, just for the clarification for, you know, the dumb public that's on this side of the podium, how can you have a pool of 90-day hires when you're furloughing people for 36 days? Why not make a pool of 36-day hires or 40-day hires? Then you could hire the people you're furloughing. That won't work either. What kind of leadership goes around biting its own tail?
All right, on number 19. See no one on the queue. Open the roll on 19. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, number 20. Arnold Sachs, number 20.
Changes to the health care plans offered through the civilian Modified Flexible Benefits Program. Does this have anything to do with a living wage ordinance-type plan? You know, the one championed by Councilman Alacon, Councilwoman Hahn, the living wage ordinance, where employees get $2 more an hour or $2.50 more an hour? It's a two-tiered plan right now to buy their own health insurance. You don't question the pensions, 2%. You don't question the cost of running government. It's becoming unaffordable to the public. You're tapping every stream of revenue. You had opportunities. You need to question the state law. You need to change the state law that requires a quid pro quo.
On number 20, if I can just acknowledge that this is a $14.3 million savings under the flex changes that are attached to that item. Number 20, up for a vote. Open the roll, number 20. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Number 21, Arnold Sachs. 21, Arnold Sachs.
Thank you, Arnold Sachs. I'm not going to question the amount of money, because that's out of your purview, $2 million for ACOM. But I am going to question the fact that on the 14th, you had an item on your agenda for sale of surplus property for bid to DA Hollywood Tower JV License Liability Corporation. And on the 26th, you had an item on your agenda for a cooperative agreement, operating agreement with Service Air LLC, FKA Penney Service Air License Liability. So why don't, on this agreement, you mention that AEC, Anacom, is actually ding-ding at one time? They've got their fingers at the airport. They've got their fingers at the harbor. They've got their fingers at MTA. They've got their fingers everywhere. They've got, as I mentioned to somebody earlier, they've got so many fingers in so many pies of the city, they need three hands. What's going on with having all your marbles in one, all your eggs in one basket? This is a crock, too.
Number 21, colleagues. See no one on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item is number 27. Arnold Sachs, number 27. You have one minute left, Arnold Sachs. One minute left. Number 27. Mr. Sachs, you need to come to the podium to speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is a joint development agreement between McCormick Baron Salazar, Los Angeles Housing Department, and Los Angeles Department of Transportation for development of a transit-oriented and in mixed income, mixed-use development in Highland Park. So I'm wondering if this has anything to do with any part of the Gold Line? Because back in 2007, there was a corporation grant deed filed at the county register's office, item number 2007, 1251559, between the Los Angeles to Pasadena Metro Blue Line Construction Authority, a public agency, AKA Metro Gold Line Foothill Extension Construction Authority, and WPBA NPI Glendora Ventures License Liability Corporation. That's for the Glendora train station. So maybe you can do just an AKA.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Janet Dodson. Janet Dodson. Is there a Janet Dodson? Thank you, ma'am. Janet Dodson? Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Janet Dodson. I'm here today representing the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. For four years, we've been asking for flexibility in the scale en masse-ing of the proposed development at the Gold Line in Highland Park. Our constant single problem with this development has been the 101 units proposed with the ancillary problems that size creates. It is out of proportion with our beautiful historic area and destroys the free parking spaces paid for by our businesses along Figaroa. We are surprised and delighted to find that the scale has been reduced to 85 units. This demonstration of flexibility offers us the opportunity to begin to talk about the design of the development. Councilman Reyes, you will find the Neighborhood Council, and I think the other community organizations, to be positive and constructive, eager to partner with you and McCormick Baron Salazar for this welcome development. We want the same things we've been asking for all this time. We want the buildings to stay under three stories as mandated by the HP of the Ordinance and the city specifications, to keep it compatible with our historic core. We want green building material and techniques. We want a playground, a park, a plaza. We need walkways accessing the businesses on Figaroa, and for these businesses to keep the above-ground parking they have paid for. We want an inviting design, a gateway to Historic Highland Park. We want an inviting design, a gateway to historic Highland Park. Councilman Reyes, will you not meet with us? Allow us to participate in the scope of development. Together, we can create the beautiful, welcoming green housing we all want in Highland Park.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Reyes?
President, personally, I'd like to thank the Highland Park residents for their participation. I believe we must have had over at least six to eight community meetings on this project over the past five years. So, I want to thank you for being here today. We look forward to continuing working with the Highland Park residents. I want to thank them for the hard work. As was stated, this project does go from 101 units to 85 units. We'll be creating 225 new stalls for the public as opposed to what was there before, 221. We'll have service, surface parking that gets astray to the restaurants and businesses to facilitate that circulation and make it that much more comfortable for the residents and those who would come and shop along Figaroa. Affordable housing, 72 of the 85 units will be affordable. 72, and that is very important to make sure the people from Highland Park can live in this facility. Our target population, we also have large families. 47% of the units are three-bedroom units. So, again, we are addressing the needs of the local area as they benefit from this. Historic design will be consistent with historic preservation overlay zone standards. We'll have sustainable design, which essentially amplifies all the building methods and unit features that will reinforce lead-based green building standards. By lowering the density, we'll be able to work on the landscaping. We'll be looking at the scale. We'll be befitting of what is the historic Highland Park area. There's many folks that have worked on this. I want to, I want to thank the community again on all their different groups that are involved. I don't want to start naming all the groups because I might leave somebody out. But there's been a very dynamic energy in making this possible. It's taken us five years to get here, but that's because we're working with different departments, different silos, connecting, creating new documents on how we engage this parking facility. So, McCormick Baron, I want to thank them for stepping up and working with us throughout the process. Housing Department, Tim Elliott, for finishing it, making sure it got done. Sergio De Heredia for being there at the initiating stages of this process. Michael Custodio from City Attorney's Office, Renee Sagales from Department of Transportation, Ibanez Sobolato from the CLA and pushing it through in that process. I want to thank Councilman Rosenthal and Councilmember Weston for allowing us to get to this point and waiting out committee. And last but not least, Rebecca Valdez and my district staff for working hard and making sure this gets done. So, colleagues, I encourage a night vote. It's an exciting project. The only hindrance is that it did take five years, but we want the CLA to look at this process, how we can create efficiencies and duplicate this effort. Colleagues, throughout the city, we have city parking lots. And that's air rights we should be leveraging for the benefit of our communities. I'm hoping we can move in this direction in a manner that creates jobs but also creates facilities that are complementary to our community. So, congratulations to Highland Park. We move forward and I look forward to continue working with you throughout this process. I ask for a night vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, on that item. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
On number 12, we now have 12 members present on an ordinance, so let's open the roll to reconsider number 12. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Number 12 is up for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Very well, thank you. We need to reconsider number 43. On number 43, reconsideration, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That matters now for reconsideration. We have a speaker on that item, Teresa Marquez. Number 43, ma'am. Number 43, Ms. Marquez.
Thank you very much. My name is Teresa Marquez. I'm from Boyle Heights. And thank you for allowing me to speak. This bridge that they're planning on putting a fence around it or underneath, I kind of have an idea as to what they're trying to do. But yet transparency again. I live a block and a half away from that historical bridge on Lorena and Fourth. And I would like to know, and my neighbors would like to know, what the plans are for that. It was supposed to be closed for about eight months to retrofit the bridge. It's been three years. Now, we see this because I've been calling the councilman's office in regards to this. When are we going to finish it? Now, I see a motion here to put a fence on it. But yet, no notice to the people. Give us a chance. Tell us what you're going to do and how you're going to do it. I don't want just a fence on there and make it worse. Make it more blight than it is right now. And there's a lot of other things that needs to be done on that bridge to make it look nice. That's a historical point in Boyle Heights. And hopefully someday, it will be part of the historical tour. Please, I just like you to bring the community together and get some ideas from the community and show them what you're thinking of doing because black and white doesn't tell me what you're going to be doing here. Thank you.
Number 43 is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, number 28. John Walsh, number 28.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to our Facebook account, Mickey Jackson, M.I.K.I. Jackson. Become a follower or a friend. As far as number 28 is concerned, we feel that number 28 should be duly considered by the agency. And for fear that I might be accused again of making a lewd comment, and I never did make a lewd comment, and that was a slander against me, I will leave. I made no lewd comment. Everybody has heard me. Never did I make a lewd comment in front of this council.
Mr. Zine, he is not talking about this item. On that item, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Number 38. Zumadog, not here. Matt Dowd, not here. And Mr. Walsh, number 38. That's our final item, colleagues. Number 28 forthwith, please. Number 28 forthwith.
I wave. You all want to get home. There's only 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 sitting here. I wave. Bye-bye.
On that item, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
For the record, 12 members are present in chambers. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Next order of business, there are excuses on the desk.
All right, let's run through those.
Councilmember Alarcon requests to leave at 11:00 on April 5:00 due to city business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused on February 25:00 due to personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on June 14, 15, and 17:00 due to personal business and on April 29:00 due to city business. That meets council policy.
All right, Mr. Zine is excused.
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused on March 8:00 and 9:00 due to city business. That meets council policy.
And he's excused as well.
And Councilmember Wesson requests to be, excuse me, requests to leave at noon on February 15:00 due to personal business. That meets council policy.
Okay.
He is excused. The desk is clear.
All right, do we have any announcements today, colleagues? Do we have announcements? Not, can we please rise for adjourning motions? If I can ask everybody in council chambers to rise, too. This is when we adjourn for members or for residents of Los Angeles and those who are important to Angelinos who have passed. And colleagues, I ask that you all join me today in adjourning in memory of Carl S. Miller, the father of our own chief legislative analyst, Jerry Miller, who passed away on Sunday in Tempe, Arizona at the age of 84. He was a decorated veteran of World War II and Korea, and he and his family made their way to Arizona in 1972. Carl had a long and successful career in nonprofit development, including being the director of development at Arizona State University, president of the PAC 10 Development Board, vice president of development for the Arizona Baptist Hospitals and Health Systems, and executive director of the Catholic Community Foundation. I know that Mr. Miller for some time was caring for his father as he was ailing and showed his incredible love and support of his father. He was preceded in death by his loving wife of 53 years, Joanne, survived by a daughter, three sons, their spouses, and five grandchildren. Services will be held at 11:00 AM on Friday, January 28:00 at the Holy Spirit Catholic Church in Tempe, Arizona, and of course, our deepest love and sympathies to our beloved Jerry Miller at this time of grief for him and his family. All members on that, please. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. And I'm pretty sure the members, former members of the legislature are going to want to also adjourn in memory of Pauline Dimples-Murillo, an elder of the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians. She died Friday at the age of 76. She was born on the San Manuel Reservation in 1934 with both Cajua and Serano heritage. Murillo grew up learning tribal history, culture, and language that she would later share outside of her community. Ms. Murillo was married to her husband, George, for 58 years and was the mother of three and grandmother of eight and great-grandmother of 19 children. She was a caring and generous and always wanting to help people. Ms. Murillo and her husband have been known for their philanthropy, donating time and funds to hospitals, schools, and nonprofit organizations in their region. For example, in 2009, the Murillo couple donated $800,000 of their personal money to Cal State San Bernardino to build an observatory. And in 2008, the family made a contribution to the Loma Linda University Medical Center, which enabled the hospital to expand its lounge for oncology patients and their families. She also published, Pauline Murillo also published the book, Living in Two Worlds, which is a pictorial account of her life with a unique insight and spiritual view of growing up on the reservation in the 20th century. In addition to that, she was passionate about her tribal heritage and culture, and Ms. Murillo traveled to schools and libraries and other organizations in the area speaking about Native American traditions. She spent hours teaching the Cajua language to her grandchildren and participated in teaching a Serano language class to tribal members to help keep the language alive. In addition to her husband and two daughters, Pauline Murillo is survived by a son, George Murillo, of Highland, two brothers, and three sisters. Funeral services are set for 10:00 AM Friday on the San Manuel Reservation, and a rosary will be held at 7:00 PM Thursday on the reservation with visitation from 3:00 PM on Thursday at Mountain View Chapel at 570 East Highland Avenue in San Bernardino. I knew Pauline Murillo as a wonderful, wonderful, kind woman. She always had nice things to say. She was always smiling, and as you can tell, she was a benefactor of the paradigm shift in this state of California as a San Manuel tribe is in fact a gaming tribe. But what's important and what I've witnessed personally around the state of California that individuals like her give hundreds and upon millions of dollars of money that they never used to have. They grew up poor, and yet, when they have had the opportunity to have some semblance of wealth, they have given, given, given at a rate that is hardly seen anywhere else. So, I knew her personally, and it's with great sadness that we announced that she passed. She suffered quite a bit over the last couple of weeks. She was in and out of a coma, and the family had hopes that she would come out of it, but she wasn't able to. So, with that, and as Councilmember Wesson pointed out, he would like to join in adjournment as well.
I'd like to second Mr. Wesson. There are adjourning motions, Mr. Labanze and then Mr. Zine.
Members, I ask for, Mr. President, if you could, we need to posit the mayor, send our condolences to the people of Moscow for the tragic bombing that took place in their airport. It's part of our international outreach and send our condolences. I ask we adjourn in memory of Robert Edward Leary, who was a resident of West Adams and was the one who really led the charge to restore the Frank Lloyd Wright Hollyhock House. He died just recently on the 23rd, and he loved Los Angeles and loved historic preservation. Additionally, Brent Eslinger, who was a German movie producer, director, screenplay, lived both in Los Angeles and in Germany, recently passed. He survived by his wife Katia and their 29-year-old daughter. And finally, members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Jack LaLanne. And recently, with Mr. Reyes, Jack LaLanne was right there at the dedication of the new Rampart Station with his wife, 96-years-old. Anybody who grew up in Los Angeles or anywhere in the country saw Jack LaLanne. In Ohio, you saw Jack LaLanne. He was all over, and when he was six-years-old, he swam across the, from Alcatraz to San, to San Francisco. But, other than that, he preached health. He was the first healthy person and his lovely wife for so many, many, many years, LaLanne, or Sandor, as well as a number of grandchildren. I ask we adjourn in memory of the great, late, great Jack LaLanne.
Thank you. Ms. Perry and I will remember when he was one of the treasures of Los Angeles a few years back and still doing push-ups on the stage there at the CCA luncheon. Mr. Zine?
Mr. President, I have two adjourning motions. The first is for longtime Los Angeles residents, Owen and Marie Brennan, passed away December 28:00. Glendale Memorial Hospital, separate illnesses within hours of each other. Owen and Marie were born in Brooklyn, New York, attended St. Rose of Lima Elementary School where they met in 1950. Owen joined the United States Army, and Marie and her family moved to Eagle Rock, California. The two kept in contact over the years, were married. St. Dominic parish in Eagle Rock on August 24:00, 1957, during his 21 years of service with the United States Army. Owen served in Korea and Vietnam, wore the Silver Star, three Bronze Stars, seven Purple Hearts, the Army Connotation Medal, the President Unit Citation, numerous other awards and citations, and was an original member of the Special Forces Green Berets. Upon leaving the Army, worked for 21 years at Los Angeles Times as a pressman. After his second retirement, was the founder of the Grandfather's Club, a Saint Ignatius of Loyola Elementary School in Highland Park. Owen and many other grandfathers spent countless hours providing maintenance work, both the elementary school and the church. After moving to Eagle Rock with their family, re-attended Holy Family High School in Glendale and Glendale Community College after her marriage to Owen. While serving as an Army wife, raised five children, participated in charitable work for military charities and local Army-based parish. Upon retirement as a military spouse, she worked for Glendale Memorial Hospital as a purchaser for 20 years, continued her parish participation at St. Ignatius of Loyola, where she assisted with many activities over the years. Owen and Marie Brennan passed away, Glendale Hospital, of separate illnesses. They're survived by the children, daughters Barbara Brennan, Alma Sanchez, sons Owen, Kevin, and Tom. Tom is a police administrator with the Los Angeles Police Department, six grandchildren. May they rest in peace. And my other adjourning motion is for a friend to many police officers in the San Fernando Valley, Robert Summers. Passed away January 19:00. Robert Summers, President, Chief Operating Officer of Howard Summers Towings Incorporated. Growing up in the San Fernando Valley, Robert had been involved with the company since its inception, 1959. First began blowing to work with his father, Howard, when he was a young boy. Later started driving light and heavy-duty tow trucks, handling daily dispatching and organizing daily bookkeeping. In 1976, he assumed the responsibilities for the day-to-day operation of the company. In 1982, Robert became an integral part of the traffic planning committee for the 1984 Los Angeles Olympic Games, was a member of the LA Official Police Garage Board of Directors, California Tow Truck Association Board of Directors, and the CTTA Legislative Committee. Graduated in 1970 from Howard, William Howard Taft High School in Woodland Hills, later attended Pierce College Management Action Program, participated in continuing education classes throughout the years designed to increase his knowledge of employment law, business management, hazardous materials training, and customer relations. Had a vast knowledge of the California Vehicle Code and Civil Code sections pertaining to towing industry, vehicle lease sales, which assisted him in operating Howard Summers Towing Incorporated. Very active in the community that his business served, was a great supporter of the LAPD Topanga West Valley Area Police Stations as well as the Valley Traffic Bureau. Proudly served on three of these boards. In addition, he was a valued member of the Topanga Boosters. Passed away January 19:00, unexpected and premature death. Is a tremendous loss to all professional and gentlemen and dear friend to me and many of my colleagues here in council. Survived by his wife Gretchen, sister Randy, daughter Eleanor, and granddaughter. May he rest in peace, Robert Summers. He was a very, very nice Robert Summers, he was a very, very nice, wonderful man, who would always be there for the community and law enforcement. May he rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Now, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. We'll next be in session two days from now on Friday, January 28, 2011. Thank you all very much for a productive meeting, and this...